Well, good evening Cedar Falls and welcome to our regular city council meeting for Monday, November 1st, 2021. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Neeler.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Dara.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any, or, excuse me, first item will be the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve regular meeting minutes of October 18th?
So.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any revisions? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes and brings us to agenda revisions. Do we have any tonight, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. First item for special presentations tonight, item two is a proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2021 is Veterans Day and Home Base Iowa Day, and I will read that proclamation. Whereas America's men and women in uniform have defeated tyrants, liberated continents, and set a standard of courage and selfless service for the entire world. And whereas on Veterans Day, our nation pays tribute to those who have proudly served in our Armed Forces of the United States. And whereas, in answering history's call with honor, decency, and resolve, our veterans have shown the power of liberty and earned the respect and admiration of a grateful nation. And whereas, we recall the service of our soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, Coast Guardsmen, and guardians, and we are reminded that the defense of freedom comes with great sacrifice, and we give thanks to those who have served freedom's cause. And whereas, in recognition of the contributions of our servicemen and women and the cause of peace and freedom around the world, Congress has provided that November 11th of each year shall be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor veterans. And whereas, in 2021, Cedar Falls will celebrate its designation as an official home base Iowa city with incentives for veterans to permanently relocate to Cedar Falls after completing their military service, including pathways to quality jobs in our community. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day and Home Base Iowa Day in Cedar Falls, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through ceremonies, expressions, programs, and prayers. And I further encourage local businesses to register with Home Base Iowa for the recruitment and hiring of our nation's veterans. Sign this 26th day of October, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green. And my second proclamation tonight is Cedar Valley United Way Month. Do we have a representative from United Way with us tonight? It was iffy if they're going to be able to join. So, we do not, but I will read their proclamation for them. So Cedar Valley United Way Month is November 2021. Whereas Cedar Valley United Way directly and indirectly impacts thousands of residents in the Waterloo Cedar Falls metropolitan area. And whereas, the citizens of the Cedar Valley benefit greatly from the many programs offered by area health and human services agencies supported by United Way. And whereas, Cedar Valley United Way brings together businesses, government, community organizations, and committed individuals, all in united effort. And whereas, United Way funds raised in the Cedar Valley support organizations and charities for the benefit of area citizens and the improvement of their quality of life. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Cedar Valley United Way Month in the City of Cedar Falls, and I encourage all citizens to support financially through the United Way, the many community organizations that provide invaluable services for our seniors, families, and youth in the Cedar Valley. And this can be done online at cedarvalleyunitedway.org/give. United we can. Sign this 25th day of October, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green. And for the last proclamation, do we have Ms. Vandersee with us tonight for Cedar Valley Hospice? Also, she was concerned also. So, I'll read that one here then. Hospice and Palliative Care Month is November 2021. Whereas November marks the 43rd anniversary of National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and 2021 celebrates the grand opening of the new Cedar Valley Hospice Administrative Facility in Waterloo to support regional hospice efforts. And whereas, last year, 1,038 hospice patients, 3,092 grief clients, and 108 HIV clients were served by Cedar Valley Hospice through knowledge, respect, and compassionate care. And whereas, hospice and palliative care provides patients and families with pain and symptom control, and emotional and spiritual support, most often delivered in the home, allowing patients to live in dignity, treated with respect, and surrounded and supported by loved ones, familiar friends, and committed caregivers. And whereas, professional and compassionate hospice staff and trained volunteers, including physicians, nurses, social workers, counselors, health aides, and chaplains, provide comprehensive care to make each patient's individual wishes and preferences a priority. And whereas, Cedar Valley Hospice provides family members and loved ones with vital counseling and bereavement care to help them cope with the many losses they face during illness and with the grief they experience afterwards. And whereas, providing high-quality hospice care reaffirms our belief in the essential dignity of every person regardless of age, health, or social status, and that every stage of human life deserves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Hospice and Palliative Care Month in the City of Cedar Falls, and encourage citizens to increase their awareness of the importance and availability of hospice and palliative services in our area, and to support the tireless efforts of Cedar Valley Hospice as they compassionately care for those with terminal illness and their loved ones. Signed, this 26th day of October, 2021, Mayor Robert M. Green. So I'll provide those to the requesters this week. And that brings us over to public forum, where speakers will have one opportunity of up to five minutes to speak on topics germane to city business. Does anyone wish to speak in public comment tonight? Yes, Ms. Beach? Name and address for the record, although we really need to do.
Oops. Rosemary Beach 5018 Sage Road, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Good evening. I want to write off the top, say I hope you vote tomorrow if you haven't already, and I think we'll have an interesting affair after the fact. What I wanted to bring up has to do with the voting in Cedar Falls, and I am, I'm just astounded by the fact that there was a PAC formed here in order to convince us to vote for certain people. And the information's been in the newspaper. I personally have five postcards that I was, my husband and I, Bob, were sent. Very nice, each one of them. They cost a fair amount of money. And so I assume I am targeted to receive these. My question is, I don't know that we've ever had a PAC of this nature in Cedar Falls before. If you were running for an office, you ask people to support you. We have done that. We have given money at some point, but this wasn't the same thing. This is not signed. Any of these are not signed. They are just signed forward. And so you have people sending out information about people who are running, and eventually, when they got to the last one, which is time to vote, they told you who to vote for. And I find that extremely distressing to me. If you want to say you're helping somebody along and you use your name and they can say that you're voting for them, you're on their committee, you have always been having a list of people you could talk to. Well, I know that two people are involved in this because it was in the newspaper, and that is Gettrill and Sonnison, and that is in the newspaper article. So of all the people in all of Cedar Falls, I don't know how many people got five separate postcards to vote for what they thought was important in Cedar Falls. Now, I call that not a good idea. I think we have to take our own voice, our own interest, our own discussions out of being sent information that is what other people are thinking. You can divide it up. But I found it distressing that we have come to this point. So I want you to think about if you haven't voted.
Well, Ms. Beach?
Yes.
So I was looking to see if there was something that you were asking for, for the city to take action on, on this?
Say what?
I was looking to see if you had something that was city business?
Well, I call it city business because it's going to be who sets up here next month, and that's the city business. Those of you are the people who are in the city business. So who do you take this to? Anyway, I will be done by saying, I don't know if the people on the last one knew that they were going to be the people that they said to vote for. I don't know that. All I can say is, those are certainly absolutely the people I will not vote for.
No, I have to cut you off there.
I'm done.
And I'll just remind the public that this is not a time for campaigning, whether you're campaigning for yourself or for someone else. So speaking about voting against someone or not voting for is also considered political campaigning as well, and I'll have to cut off that. So does anyone else wish to speak in public comment tonight, or public forum? Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Carla Lauer, and I reside at 1611 Hawthorne in Cedar Falls. It's one of my homes. The other one is in Johnston, Iowa. I've owned the property for about a year, but it's been in my family for about 40 years. In the last two and a half weeks, I've had the occasion to call 911 twice because we've had two significant collisions at the corner of Victory and Hawthorne. I'm, I don't know if you have a, I don't see an engineering department head up here. I don't know if that's handled out of public works, but I do think we need to be looking at that and studying it. The posted speed limit is 25 miles per hour. The traffic routinely travels about 35 to 45 miles per hour. Speed was definitely an issue. It, the first accident occurred at about 10:09 at night on October 13th, which was a Wednesday. The vehicle that was westbound on Hawthorne ended up into the homeowner's yard. Would have went into the house except for there's an embankment on the property owners to the north, and so the city or their contractor is currently reconstructing all curb gutter and storm sewer there, because that was the impact. I do want to talk to Chief Olson about response time on that particular issue because that, that was a problem too. But I think the big thing here is you have an arterial to, for main thoroughfares. You've got that particular stop sign on Victory, where it intersects with Hawthorne. You've got traffic traveling northbound on Victory from Waterloo Road to get to Rainbow, and vice versa, the other direction. And then between Round and Waterloo Road, that's also a connector to two, two major thoroughfares, with the school being at the other end. We actually owned the property, was in my family prior to the sidewalk going in. So if, you know, if you've got to call 911 twice in two and a half weeks, you have a problem with the intersection. You have a problem with cars going too fast and a failure to yield. I'm hoping that either speed bumps in the 1500 and the 1600 block on the approach to that intersection, or possibly a four-way stop. My neighbor could not be here tonight. Her name is Beth Cook. She actually lives at the intersection at 1605, so she's the first house there, and I'm the second. You know, if I'm only here part-time and I'm making two 911 calls, I hate to think what the history is of that intersection. I'm thinking it's dangerous. Another thing that I'm concerned about is that is the only street, Hawthorne is the only street that has sidewalk in that neighborhood. And so ergo, we have got boatloads of people walking their kids and dogs along there. If that car had been going the other way and it ended up on the sidewalk, we might have had a fatality. The second one happened, oh, let's see, that was on 10:22 at 5:17 PM. And actually, there was a young man that came about 30 seconds later down in front of my house pushing a pram with two little kids in it, one an infant and one about 18 months old. So I know that three of these four cars involved had to be towed. So I guess I'm just looking for somebody to look into it. I don't know what the process is. I know it's not an UCP to do, but I do believe we have both a speed issue there and, you know, a pretty accident-prone intersection. So now for Chief Olson on the first phone call.
And please direct questions to me.
Okay. So we, the first, my neighbor made the first 911 call at about 10:09. I made a second one. When no one had arrived by 10:18, I made a second phone call to the non-emergency number. And I was informed that gee, they were, they were short getting there because it was shift change. So I asked if they were running eights, tens, or twelves, and she said eights, which would mean, I think, you must go 600, 1,400 hours, 600 hours, 1,400 hours, and 2,200 hours for shift change. She informed me that an officer had been en route for eight minutes. I go to Walmart a lot. I can get over that direction towards the Public Safety Building from a variety of routes from that intersection in 18 minutes, a round trip. It actually did take 18 minutes for a black and white squad. During that time period, you've got a full-sized extended cab black pickup that is now inoperable in the pointing northbound, in the southbound lane of Victory. It shouldn't take 18 minutes to have a response in this size of town, with or without personal injury, because citizens cannot do a field sobriety test. It's just that simple.
One minute remaining.
You know, so I mean, if somebody, if they would be intoxicated, they hop back in the, in the truck, there's no way for us to stop them. So that's, those are my thoughts on the matter, anyway. Pardon me?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. So what is the process from here? How do you respond to a citizen that's requested a traffic study or traffic improvement for an area?
So when you're finished, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
I think I'm done.
Okay, excellent. So would you like to take your seat then? Then we'll answer your question.
Sure. I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, certainly. So it's either Director Olson or Director Shragi, if you'd like to comment on this?
Sure, I'll get started here. So in regards to the traffic control at the intersection and the accidents that occurred, we can do a study at that intersection for a four-way stop analysis. We can also put out counters and check the speed in those areas, and then we can provide some recommendations thereafter. So I can directly be in communication with, with the individual in regards to that, so. And generally, the, obviously, the, the snow comes to be a factor with the traffic counters. We can't have those on the streets with the, with the plows, so we try to get that done either before or it'd have to be right away in the spring, so.
Okay, great. So ma'am, if you'd like to leave your, either your contact information after, or if you just want to email it to me at mayor@cedarfalls.com, I'd be happy to get that to them, so you can get those answers for you. It would be, it's any, any city staff member up here would work. Thank you for the question.
Could I respond briefly to the?
Yes, Director Olson.
Yeah, so I'm not familiar with this incident at all, so it's hard for me to comment on specifics. But if you do have an automobile accident and there are injuries or it's unknown injuries, we will respond lights and sirens, so will, so will the paramedics. If it's called in as, as an accident without injuries, the officers will travel with traffic. Of course, that also depends on, are they in the middle of an intersection, are they blocking traffic? And so there's a lot of variables on how we respond. So, so I'll certainly check into those timeframes and see exactly what, what the, the arrival time was and what the circumstances were, but it's very difficult to comment without having that knowledge.
Okay, thank you, Director Olson. Does anyone else wish to speak for public comment tonight? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
James Kearns, 3123 Cottonwood Lane. Some important dates coming up. Today, of course, All Saints Day, tomorrow, Election Day, 10th of November, the Marine Corps Birthday, Semper Fie, and the 11th of November, Veterans Day. Hoorah. Thanks for the proclamation regarding the Veterans Day. I want to talk a little bit about city councils' actions and their decision-making process. Years ago, when the falls was being considered for location, when Ray Edwards was being closed down, there was quite a bit of misinformation that was organized and presented throughout the public, misinformation about, well, it's going to be too noisy, it's going to ruin the Lutheran home, it's going to be unsafe. And so there again, Santa and I came down, talked to the council, and I think the decision that was made turned out to be a wonderful aquatic center. University redesign was another example of that. Vocal members of the community complaining, roundabouts, they're un-American, they're too expensive, they're unsafe, two lanes of traffic on university won't handle the load, people won't drive on university, my business is dying. A lot of rhetoric with very little data, and again, an organized effort of fear, threats, and misinformation. Well, the study group that went over to Carmel, Indiana, looked at roundabouts, the data that was presented, and you don't have stop signs on boulevard intersections, so that T-boning kind of stuff cannot happen. The, you can have a fender bender, and if people are impatient, that does happen, I'm sure, but nothing serious. So congratulations, another great decision reached through strategic planning, open forum, a lot of conversation, and a lot of training. The PSO program, again, a lot of study in that, went over to Michigan, I believe it was, and talked about how hard it would be to bring this in because it's a non-traditional way of doing business, but a better way by the look of it. But the misinformation that was being presented, we'll have fewer firefighters, our ISO rating is going to be lower, so our taxes are going to go up. People will not want to work in that system, will be less safe, it'll cost more. 75% of the citizens want the traditional model. So these misinformation stuff is a concern to me. We should be making decisions based upon data. The data is available. And when you look at University Avenue now, with the roundabout, or, excuse me, the PSO program now, we've got like 63 trained firefighters compared to the, what we had before, which I think was around 30. Our ISO rating is in the top 96% of the state. It's excellent. It's great. Response time is improving, and it's saving us tax dollars. So this, this kind of decision, I again applaud the, the council for, you know, it's kind of risky to do things differently. I know that from my work experience. So in addition to that, it's a local issue. PSO is a local issue. We didn't have the state trying to tell us how to, about roundabouts. We didn't have the state trying to tell us where to put the pool. We shouldn't have the state involved at all with deciding what kind of fire prevention department we have. And I do know that there's been some backroom deals, some lobbying going on at the state level to introduce amendments to non-related bills to force us to go to the traditional mental, method of firefighting or to risk losing funding for the University of Northern Iowa. And I can't imagine what would happen to the city without the University of Northern Iowa. So if that had passed, really, probably would never have been a decision.
One minute remaining.
That is, in my opinion, a backroom deal. It certainly doesn't put me back in charge. So I'm about done. I just wanted to go backwards here and say, November 11th, again, hurrah. Thanks, vets. I guarantee you, when I got out of the Marines in the 70s, there was no hurrah for the vets going on then. Semper Fie, November 10th. We always liked that because there was a party on the 10th and a party on the 11th. So brothers Semper Fie, let's party. We're going to have a Cedar Falls youngster, not a youngster anymore, Colonel, mission commander going to space, probably Wednesday. So let's take advantage and root shari onto his extraterrestrial location in his command, and certainly tomorrow, exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just for clarification, I found out today that that mission has been scrubbed for Wednesday night. I was going to bring it up later, but in case people hear it, it's not going to happen late, late tomorrow night. It's at the earliest, the launch will be, I believe, early, no, late Saturday night, so the night of the 6th. So don't show up at the Public Safety Building tomorrow night because we won't be there. All right. So with that, anyone else wish to speak in public forum tonight? Yes, sir. Mr. Vajpay. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Eshan Vajpay, 3831 Conver Lane. Tonight I'll be making my comments on behalf of my client, Skyview LLC. Just generally, before we get into the meat of the downtown ordinance issue, I'm thinking about the way this process has moved through study, moved through P and Z, moved through council, and what I perceive, and I think a lot of people perceive, and I'm going to talk a little bit later about why perception matters. Perception is very important. The way people understand things, even if they might be technically incorrect, is very important in this city. I think back to the PSO issue, and I think to the problems we're still having about it. After it went through all the deliberative processes, and it went through study, and it went through committee, and towns were visited, and council really took a hard look at it. And regardless of where you fall on it, does anyone who was part of that decision-making process really have zero regrets about how it was studied, implemented, and messaged to the city and the citizens? Does anyone really think it was 100% on point? I don't think so, regardless of where you fall on sort of the general idea of it. And I would guess that a lot of people would like to have some aspects of that rollout back, a second bite at the apple to message better, to educate people better, even if you think they should understand it. Just because you think they should doesn't mean they do, and it leads to a ton of problems. And so I encourage you to think about the downtown ordinance as sort of a second chance to not do that with the, just as was done with the PSO program, to pause, take a breath, not rush it through just to get it through and done, which is what I perceived was happening at the last council meeting. It was sort of like, not, is that amendment, is that a good amendment? Is that good for Cedar Falls? It was more like, is that significant change? Is that going to send it back? Okay, then I'm against it. Just for the process of getting it through and done. I don't think that's, I think that's been proven to not be the best way to roll out major things. And you've got 75 property owners, or 75 properties owned by various people in this community who are not dummies, and they got a real problem with it. So that's a failure on in messaging. And I think this is an opportunity to pump the brakes on something that is not going to be life or death to anybody if it happens now, next month, or the next month. And if it's such a great idea... And if it's such a great idea, it'll survive any election change. And take this as the opportunity to really message better and convince stakeholders, even if it does mean turning back the clock a little bit. This is sort of like your chance to not bungle the PSO rollout messaging in just another part of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vajpayee. Anyone else wish to speak for public forum tonight? Seeing none, then consider public forum closed here tonight, and bring us to old business, which is item five is our first. It's passing ordinance 2994, amending Chapter 26 zoning and other associated sections of the Code of Ordinances relative to the establishing of the CD DT Downtown Character District upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and seconded. Open first for council questions. Any questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember DeBir.
Well, I'm curious, since there's been seventy-five properties that have signed a petition against it, can someone go over with us what some of their complaints are?
Would someone from the public wish to speak on that? If you'd like to bring that forward, since you brought forward the, the items, it makes sense for you to speak to those.
Uh, I mean, I, not a monolith of people, not exactly, everyone has the exact same reasons, but generally speaking, as the person, I think, who's been in touch with a lot of people, I think it's the, the very real concern that there is a parking, we are teetering on a parking crisis downtown. I think it's, I mean, certain days are better than others right now, but there's, there's parking shortages perceived by a lot of people in town, and that keeps people away. I mean, I have a colleague who, right or wrong, and sometimes I tell him he's wrong. I said, oh, there's plenty of parking on this day downtown. But right or wrong, he doesn't even try to go downtown because of some pretty bad experiences with parking in the past. And so as you have more and more people doing that, they're not going to try to come back. It only takes a couple of bad experiences with a restaurant or something like that, and if it's good the third time, they're never going to know because they're never going to come back. They're going to go to other parts of town or a different restaurant. So I think the concern is that by taking a district that is already marginally parked and so severely reducing the parking requirements, you are not only, and it doesn't matter that shared parking is, I'm, I'm trying not to go off on this, but it doesn't matter that shared parking isn't mandatory for everybody, that it's only mandatory for new buildings. It's going to be mandatory for everybody because the shared, the reduction in parking is going to cause too much overflow off of underparked buildings, off of the street, and into people's lots, even if they're not subject to shared parking, they will be. I think that's a huge concern. And then, as I think other speakers have alluded to, what additional businesses are going to come downtown and say, we're going to bring people in? It's, you know, you've, we've talked about in this community for years, trying to get a lunch crowd downtown, trying to do something like that, but you got to have more people downtown to do that. And I think that's the, and you got to have parking to support those employees. So I think the parking is honestly quite a big part of it. And also, I think people are very hesitant to the slope, the slipperiness of the slope, where you're going to rezone a whole community and you're just going to overhaul it like this. And it's like, if you're going to do that in the face of seventy-five property owners, what else are you going to do? So I guess, I hope that ain't cut into my public comment, but.
No, no. Is, and is that seventy-five property owners or a smaller number of property owners with, who have seventy-five properties?
It's seventy-five properties to date, um, and a smaller number of owners.
Just wanted to clarify that.
How many properties are downtown?
Well, I don't know that. It's a lot of information that, I, I don't know.
How many properties are in the area that are zoned?
I, I don't know.
I wouldn't want to put downtown on the spot, but Community Main Street, would you happen to have that information of the exact number?
Wasn't meaning necessarily for Eshawn, just a question in general.
I don't have the exact number. I have the downtown district, so the company is larger than what our district.
Okay.
We have ninety-six different property owners in our district.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Quick question, do you mind if I?
For Harding, please.
So ninety-six property owners? And I looked up some to see, said there were a hundred and sixty properties and ninety-six owners. Okay. And there's seventy-five properties, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Fair enough. And owners, do you know how many owners there were? I, I tried to do a rough add-up. It looked about like twenty-five, but I, I do want to be accurate if I miss some.
It's on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Okay. And, and at this point, I, I understand we're, we're sort of pulling new information, and typically, we don't draw from the, the gallery for that, but if, if council doesn't object, it's, it seems like there's some information we'd want to have. So I'll continue this approach if that's, if that works. If it devolves into chaos, we'll change it, but I think it'll be helpful for us to, to get information this way.
No, I agree.
Okay.
I think it's good to be able to.
So other questions from council?
Well, I've got a question. Parking is just one part of this rezoning, isn't it? And I thought in our last meeting, we were fairly clear that fairly soon, we would be starting some sort of discussion group to look at what the actual parking problems are and potential ways to resolve it, to pay for it, a collective group of city staff and stakeholders to have that discussion. Was that not forthcoming?
That's correct. That's what I understood.
So it just seems to me if that's a part of the deal, I mean, we know that's going to happen. We should just be moving forward and get that group organized, get the discussion started. Because the city doesn't have an answer, the public doesn't have an answer, there's a lot of questions, but we have an ordinance here that, that shows a great deal of potential in helping this city move forward for the next generation. It's a lot, maybe a lot less about us and more about the next group of people that want to move to this community. So I'd like to get it moving, get the discussion about parking, get, have a serious discussion, recognizing it's not going to happen overnight, but get, get on with the parking discussion.
Councilwoman Harding?
I guess I'm just going to say some thoughts I've had lately, because I've talked to hundreds of people by now, and some great conversations for, against. There are people for this, there are people against this. It is a controversial issue. I respect that. Ultimately, I am not a parking expert, and I have not talked to any parking experts out there that are citizens that have credentials by that means. We have stakeholders, and I do respect a lot of the stakeholders. I've talked to some stakeholders that are for this, even though they say they're, they're not out there. They're out there. There's a good amount of stakeholders out there, as evidenced by the, the fact that we have a hundred and sixty properties there. So there are people, I went into a great business the other day that I frequent, and she said, I said, all right, you know, what are your thoughts? She wasn't on the petition. She-he, I'll try to keep them anonymous. And I was a little surprised, honestly. And I said, uh, what are your thoughts? Just give them to me straight, you know? She said, I did some research, and I read about parking, and I'm really surprised, but I think this might be good for us. And that's what I did a ton of. I did a ton of research, did a ton of reading, I did a ton of studying with people who are experts in parking, and I have to trust someone. I understand people are opposed to it and scared, and I respect that. But I don't know the answer, and a lot of other people don't know either. They're just, they're scared that it may create a problem. But we, we've been handed the solution by parking experts that say, this is a good way to go. There are other communities, I believe there's another community north of us that just adopted zero parking spaces mandatory. A lot of cities are going to zero. So we're not going that far. We're trying something to share, we're trying to, to lower the, the residential, not the public, because it's been shown that we overparked public. I've done look into numbers of how many, what is the average per house in suburban areas all over the U.S.? What is the average in cities? Tons of time. And I respect that this is a divided issue. And at some point in time, we have to look to the experts. And that's where, why I feel comfortable with this. It was proposed by experts that we hired. The difference in this issue and the PSO issue, for me, breaking open that wound, is that when the PSO thing was an issue, we had the experts saying there was a problem. In this issue, we have a handful of people that have a legitimate issue that I do respect, even if you don't think I don't, I do. But making a decision comes down to making a decision with their thoughts in mind, the people for it in mind, the future of Cedar Falls in mind, and the people that elected you that don't want to be a part of the decision, because they are there. There's all these facets that go into it. So I just wanted to say that to be on the record, because I realize it's controversial. I respect everybody's time. I expect to continue to watch this closely. And if you talk to me and we disagreed, I didn't not listen. I did. We, we just happened to disagree, and I'm sorry about that on this issue. I hope you still continue to reach out to me, and I do think I agree with Frank that we should try to move this forward. We have experts saying that this will help us, and it's worth a try. So anyway, that's, that's what I have to say.
Good, thank you. I'll turn it over for public comment now, if anyone wishes to speak forward on this item. Just please provide name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Lisa Sevcek, and I live at 1421 Clay Street. So I guess Simon, you and I are at odds on this. This parking thing is really, really big. I have a problem with these experts from DC, wherever, you know, they're all from, saying, yeah, we, we all need point seven-five per bedroom. We drive cars here, you know? Maybe they live out east, maybe they all ride the subway, maybe rather they, they ride the bus, but we do drive cars here, and, and that's just our, the way we live around here. So I don't feel that you should start saying, well, we don't need to have at least one car per bedroom. I think that's wrong. I think we're at a really crucial, important time in Cedar Falls as far as this parking, and I'm sure everybody's kind of getting tired, why are we always talking about parking? Well, this is a really big thing. We have kids that went to school at Ames, Iowa City, we've been out in Milwaukee, and, and they have terrible parking problems, okay? And we're at a point where we don't have to be like them. You know, I don't care what the experts say at, at wherever, this is Cedar Falls, this is our town. I've been pretty much a lifelong member of, or a lifelong resident of Cedar Falls, and we don't have to be like everybody else. We can do what's right for Cedar Falls. And for people to keep saying, we don't have, we don't drive cars, we don't need a parking space for, for each bedroom, well, that's just wrong. So I really want you to think about that. And then another thing about this, this forum-based zoning, that's another way where Cedar Falls is really great. We've got, we've got neighborhoods, you know, really nice blocks. We were out visiting relatives a while ago down in Leavenworth, Kansas, and I'm looking around there and it's, I'm thinking, ugh, you know, I don't like this. They had all these just random restaurants or whatever businesses in the neighborhoods, and that wasn't nice. We don't want to have that in Cedar Falls. We want to keep our, our beautiful neighborhoods where they are. We want to keep businesses with businesses and let residences be with residents. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Sevcek. Anyone else wish to speak for public? Seeing none? Oh, yes, Mr. Vajpayee. And yeah, I won't count your earlier time since we called on you.
All right. Eshawn Vajpayee, 3831 Conver Lane. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, so this will be like half advocacy and half plea for moving forward. So the most recent correspondence I got, and that, what I was authorized to share, and I emailed it pretty late, but it was a, an email or a letter from St. Pat's Parish, the, the priest there, and expressing some really grave concerns about the parking situation. And I read it, and some of it is indicative of maybe a person who's not super up to speed on all the issues, and so there's probably some inaccuracies in that letter. And that's what I was talking about earlier, is yeah, you could be wrong, but this is the pastor of St. Pat's, and he's really concerned. So who fell down on that job to make that constituent educated about the realities of this? And so again, that's why I think, I really do think this is the second chance to pump the brakes and re-message this so that it doesn't keep being the massive problem that is. Because if you just pull forward, then people aren't going to feel hurt, even though they should, or maybe they were. They're not going to feel it, and it's just going to be, it's going to be an open wound for as long as you let it be, I guess. And, and so perception, so that's one thing, but perception is another thing. I was thinking about, okay, well, the shared parking. We did come forward with a solution, so I kind of want to push back that we didn't have a solution. We came forward with a, a solution, four amendments. Perception on the shared parking is really important because hardly anyone understands it, like who it actually is going to affect. And the problem with that is, the public is going to start to think, this is just my theory, John Q Bar Patron Downtown Cedar Falls is going to think, oh, honey, it's shared parking. And every, it's just going to be a free-for-all, because everyone's going to think it's shared parking. So to combat that, you're going to have to put up all these signs. Oh, this lot over here is shared parking because it was ground floor expansion, and then this lot over here is not shared parking because it's grandfathered in. And what do you think's going to happen? Everyone's just going to park wherever they want. People don't have that perception now that they can just park wherever they want. They're going to start to have that perception. And so you underpark, you don't message properly about the shared parking, and you can say, oh, yeah, you put up a no parking sign and put up a shared parking sign here. We'll see how that pans out, but you underpark, you overdevelop, you have ambiguous rules about where you can park and when you can park, and I guarantee you, that overflow parking is going to end up in some poor parking lot like St. Pat's. And maybe some businesses have the time and the resources to police that parking lot and tow people out of there, but I, I wonder if they do on a Sunday, on a busy Sunday. So think about that. I mean, think about the misperception in this room maybe, and amongst the constituents who just don't understand what we're doing here. Well, that matters. It really matters. And that's why I think the shared parking, which is the most ambiguous part of this whole thing, and the most problematic part of it, and the thing that I've pointed out before, could be so easily taken out and put back in if we do build a ramp, or if we don't build a ramp. I mean, that's years out. We can't even be talking about that as some sort of solution. Oh, great, you made a referral last meeting for a ramp. Should have made it six months ago when you were talking about this. Pull it back in if it is needed. Push it back out now. It's so easy to move in and out, but everyone's scared to do it because then it's a substantial change. Uh-oh, what's going to happen if it goes back to P and Z? I don't think anything's going to happen. It's going to be fine. It'll come back in six months. And nothing's going to happen until then. So the plea then is, if this is going to pass tonight, I think the city needs to step up, and the city needs to provide huge resources in terms of enforcement of parking, in terms of messaging to the public about telling them, no, it is not just a free-for-all, and you got to stay out of these lots, and it is not shared parking. And if the city, that's your responsibility. If you're going to open this can, you know, of worms, you better be willing to clean it up too at the same time, and not put that onus on citizens to police these lots for a problem that you've created. Thank you.
Thank you, Shavachay. Anyone else wish to speak for public comment tonight on this item? Seeing none? Then any final questions or comments from council? Then this id, oh, yes, Councilmember Cruz, please.
To Mr. Dara's comment there about an agreement to study the parking, I think almost two months ago, I had a referral to find out from the city how we could do a public finance or a shared. or a shared finance or private and so on, how to build it, how to maintain it. I'm assuming that's what we want to talk about. So I guess unless there's other comments on other components, I guess, let me back This proposal has a checklist, but the checklist doesn't define or answer questions from people on when is the 12 hours that they share of, of the new business? Is it midnight to noon and so on, depending on the type of business that they operate? A lot of questions. I'm, like Johnny Carson, I'm predicting here that this is going to pass with no changes, but then are we going to put a moratorium on it and study the parking and figure out the, you know, if I need to make a motion now to do that, or can I do that right after it passes? Because that's what I'm concerned with. We're saying we're going to look at a parking ramp or clarifying the checklist, when's the 12 hours and the 600 feet away? Or do we start the parking ramp discussion in earnest? Because there have been proposals, and I've seen them before COVID, of combination multi-use parking ramps with retail and office in them. So they're there. They're not that far away. We can pull them off the shelf and blow the dust off of them and get going, so it wouldn't take six months to get it going, so.
So if you'd be looking for, for council action after this, then the best time would be if it were to pass, I believe, for a council referral?
Well, I'd like to do it before that to get it rolling because then I, then we got to refer it to the next one. I'd like something between number five and number six, I could say, let's have a moratorium subject to the parking study.
So for Mr. Rogers, for a moratorium or some sort of provision on the existing ordinance, would, would that be in order?
So.
Is it directly connected to the ordinance itself?
Well, council can decide to connect it to the, the ordinance on the table, which would be a substantial amendment, which would start the process back over again. As, as an action, a separate action item, I'd be concerned that the public wasn't notified that for consideration tonight would be, I assume, a moratorium on development pending the parking study completion. I would be very concerned about lack of adequate notice in the agenda for an item like that, so I think referral's the best way to do it. Could refer it back as quickly as council wishes, but I don't think it could be, the action item can be taken up tonight.
Because, if I may. Again, I predict, you know, Johnny Carson's saying this will pass, no changes, but then we don't have all the clarity in the checklist for the 12 hours and who's going to monitor it and that sort of thing. So.
If you're, if you're concerned about timing, would you be willing to, to have a referral for a, a special meeting for council to discuss?
That's.
Later, later this week if it passes?
Well.
So it's not just sitting out until the next meeting?
I'd consider that, sure. I mean, I'm just looking at, you know, and we're getting into the holiday season, you know, we got one just passed, if you call Halloween, but Thanksgiving, Christmas, Christmas events and all sorts of things that, um, yeah.
Okay. From, from my understanding, there was, there is a consensus for council to look at changes or tweaks in the future, in the very near future to this?
I mean.
Has it, we just didn't want it to happen, or, or council wasn't interested in having it happen prior to? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Should we do something before the November 15 council meeting as a committee of the whole, again?
So that, yeah, that, that could be something that's the, the referral to ask for that, and then council can approve that. Yes, Councilmember Miller?
Mayor, for Ms. Howard, we've discussed this, have we not? It depends on the business that is coming forward as to where, how their shared parking is going to be used, correct?
Yes.
Kind of the basis of Mr. Cruz's question right here is it depends on the business that comes forward, and they get to determine when the, the timeframes that parking.
That's correct, when they propose their project that they would, they would request a certain time period.
Sure. Was, what else did you want to discuss?
How do we finance a parking ramp? Can I make, can I speak?
And we determined that that was going to happen at goal setting, I believe, didn't we? The conversation was going to start at goal setting?
Correct. That was the referral last time to, to talk about the possibilities of a parking ramp, where, when, how it would happen. Financing, putting it on the CIP would happen at goal setting. And there was also a consensus many, many meetings ago at a committee of the whole to circle back around in a year, sun, to, you know, to see how this ordinance is going. So those were the three things. If we have to make that more official, I'm willing to look at that as well.
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
To, I think I remember bringing that up a little while back, that nothing gets built in a year to evaluate. It'll take, you know, a couple of years to get something built, have it occupied, rented, and then see what the effect is on the surrounding businesses that are currently there and the parking. So that isn't really a stopgap way to evaluate, I don't think. I think we need to have a discussion because we have concerns from many people here. We're real close to half of the businesses that have a concern and should be addressed. So, you know, we have more businesses coming in, they're going to cannibalize the parking that's there for a new business. The old businesses potentially lose money. Investors with the developers will lose money, and it's not going to be as robust as everyone thinks it might be. That's how I look at it as, from my business analysis that I do often. It's, it's problematic. You're cannibalizing. There's only so much square space. There's only so many blocks downtown. So I'd like to have the parking discussion at a committee of the whole because goal setting is not telecast, so the public won't see that. We don't telecast goal setting. So the discussion would be not as open and transparent and interactive with the public.
Okay. So would you be willing to save the parking discussion referral for committee of the whole for the referral time, or do you?
We can talk about now. I mean, it's, whenever.
Okay. So I, my preference, unless council objects, would be to wait until we are in the referral stage for that, because that's going to be a clean time to bring that up and vote on it? Unless anyone objects?
I think that would be good. It would also allow us to decide exactly what are we talking about? What, what are the questions we need to answer before goal setting?
Okay, so we can have that discussion at the end of the night for what that looks like if, if council has the second to the motion. Councilmember Miller?
My intent with making that motion was to allow staff enough time to put some, to get some information together for council to have at goal setting. It wasn't to have it at a meeting that isn't televised or anything like that. The whole point of goal setting is to commit that this is a direction with a new council that we think is worthy of going, and then that allows staff to put that in motion for the next year. So I guess I would anticipate that you guys would be having conversations over the next year with community, Main Street, downtown business owners. Here's how this can look. Here's one way or two ways. I don't know what staff brings forward, but I, goal setting is, it's going to be here in a month.
Okay. And, and that, that debate, that discussion, it seems like that's really gravitating towards that meeting, whether or not we should have the meeting, what should be obtained in it. So I'd like to, to separate that out from, from the topic at hand, which is just the, the amendment, or amendment to the ordinance for the code. So is there any other discussion on establishing the downtown character district and the codes involved? Okay, I've seen none. Then I'll read it through. It's been motion and seconded to pass ordinance 2994 amending chapter 26 zoning and other associated sections of the Code of Ordinances relative to establishing the CD DT downtown character district upon its third and final consideration. So motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Four voting aye, three voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bring us to item six, that's passing ordinance 2995 amending 2618 of the Code ordinances, by removing all property within the defined boundaries of the downtown character district from the current zoning districts and placing the same in the CD DT downtown character zoning district upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Move to pass ordinance 2995.
Been motioned?
Second.
And seconded. Open for discussion. Seeing none. Any from the public? Seeing none. Then this item has been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Four voting aye, three voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to item seven, which is passing ordinance 2996 amending chap, section 2618 of the Code of Ordinances by removing certain property located in the vicinity of Cedar Heights Drive and Valley Heights Drive from the C1 Commercial District and placing the same in the RP Planned Residential District upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none from council? Any from the public? Seeing none. Then I bring it back, and it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
That passes and takes us to item eight, which is passing ordinance 2997 adopting by reference the 2021 International Building Code, 2021 International Residential Code, 2021 International Mechanical Code, 2021 Uniform Plumbing Code, 2021 National Fuel Gas Code, and 2020 National Electrical Code and associated revisions to Chapter Seven Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motioned and seconded. Any council discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, then motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote also.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Over to nine, passing ordinance 2998 adopting by reference the 2021 International Fire Code and associated revisions to Chapter Nine, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Any council discussion? And any public discussion of this? Okay, seeing none. Then it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Over to 10, that's passing ordinance 2999 amending chap, section 2618 of the Code of Ordinances by removing certain property located at 5424 University Avenue from the R1 Residence District and C2 Commercial District and placing the same in the C2 Commercial District upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motioned and seconded. Open for council discussion? Seeing none. Any public discussion? Okay, back to council.
Just a clarification on the, was there a communication from the owner?
Yes.
That we could have read? It was to suspend the ordinance?
Yeah, so, so what has been asked on that one from the petitioner is that the rules be suspended and this be approved on its third and final consideration tonight so that they can move forward with construction if council doesn't object. So I would entertain a motion for that if council's willing to bring one forward.
Make a motion to talk about it?
Yes, so motioned.
Second.
And motioned and seconded. For Mr. Rogers, I'm, I'm a little fuzzy on this one. With this kind of a rules suspension, is that debatable?
It is.
Okay, so we can debate it if you want to have this third reading occur tonight rather than wait until the next meeting. So open it for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Miller?
My biggest concern is with the neighboring property owner. Have we had any communication with them or along the way at P&amp;Z or anything along those lines?
So open it for staff?
We have, we did give quite a bit of notice at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and there was no objection from the immediate neighbor to the west. There were a few concerns about the existing business and some noise and that sort of thing, but nothing about the rezoning itself.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sires?
I'd be in favor of doing the third reading. I was at Planning and Zoning, there was no, no problems with anybody there. I think that would be fine.
Okay, so is this a super majority requirement, five?
Three-fourths.
Three-fourths, okay. So with that, if no other discussion, then all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Just, I apologize.
Roll call vote.
That's right. This, this is a roll call vote, so.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor, to suspend the rules.
Okay, so that will mean that this approval will occur on this, this reading tonight rather than waiting until the, just the next week and having a separate reading, so it'll all be resolved this evening. So with that, going into the discussion, is there any council questions or discussion for the item itself? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on the item? Okay, so motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass, and there won't be a reading next time. It's, it's approved this evening. That takes us over to new business tonight, and our consent calendar has items that will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public wished to have a, a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member wish to pull an item 11 through 18 for separate discussion? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item from 11 to 18 for separate discussion? Seeing none there? So I will read those items. Item 11 is approving recommendations from the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. 12 is receiving and filing committee of the whole minutes for October 18th. 13 is receiving and filing the report of recommendations of the Racial Equity Task Force, and again, I very much want to say my, our council and the city's appreciation for the work of this task force, and we look forward to discussing these items in our goal-setting session in December. Item 14 is receiving and filing the departmental monthly reports for September. 15 is receiving and filing the FY21 Street Financial Report for the city. 16 is receiving and filing the annual report of the College Hall Partnership for the SMID Funds and Economic Development Grant. 17 is receiving and filing the annual report for Community Main Street relative to the SMID District Funds and FY22 Economic Development Grant. And then 18 is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve these items on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Then those do pass, and it takes us over. Yes.
Can I just make a comment on number 17?
Certainly.
Number 17 included an Eagle Scout project, and I wanted to take an opportunity to thank Carson Wertz for that project and also for his donation of the unused funds to Community Main Street.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving over to the resolution calendar, item, these are items 19 through 39. And does any council member wish to pull one of those items, 19 through 39, for separate discussion?
24, please.
24? Okay.
And 27, if you would.
What was that number?
27.
27, okay. So we will pull 24 and 27. Does the public wish to pull any of the items that are in 19 through 39? Okay, seeing none. Then I will read those other items and then bring us back to 24 to 39. 19 is a resolution levying a final assessment on costs for mowing a property. 20 is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a contract for a GTSB relative, a grant relative to traffic enforcement and training. 21 is a resolution for an execution of a 28E agreement with the Alcoholic Beverages Division. 22 is a resolution approving and adopting the recreation fee schedule for December 1st, 2021. 23 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an operating agreement for the Pheasant Ridge Walters Golf Courses. 25 is a resolution approving a mixed-use residential zoning district site plan for a car wash at 1125 Fountains Way. 26 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a First Amendment for ISAD Ministerial Alliance as a community development block grant amendment. 28 is a resolution approving and accepting contract and bond of Boulder contracting for a street patching project. 29 is a resolution approving certificate completion for the 2020 permeable alley project with bent sand and gravel. And 30 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement for Snyder and Associates for the West Viking Industrial Park Expansion. 31 is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a supplemental agreement to that professional services agreement with AECOM relative to 21, 21 survey services. 32 is a resolution approving. Thirty-two is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement for AECOM relative to the West Twenty-seventh Street Reconstruction Project. Thirty-three is a resolution setting November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one as the date of a public hearing for caper and CDBG and home programs. Thirty-four is a resolution setting November fifteenth as the date of public hearing for proposed ordinance granting a partial property tax exemption for the vault. Thirty-five is a resolution receiving the filing and setting November twenty, excuse me, November fifteenth as the date of public hearing for the Green Hill and South Main Reconstruction, or excuse me, Intersection Improvement Project. Thirty-six is a resolution setting November fifteenth as a date of public hearing on proposed condemnation of three-fifteen East Dunkerton. Thirty-seven is the same for twelve-twenty-seven West Twenty-second Street. Thirty-eight is the same for seven-ten West Thirteenth Street, and thirty-nine is the same for thirteen-oh-three Walnut Street. Is there a motion to approve those items minus twenty-four and twenty-seven?
So move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So let's circle back to item twenty-four, which is a resolution approving and adopting an administrative plan for voluntary property acquisition funded under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motioned and seconded.
Second.
Councilman Miller, you had a question on this or a comment?
Nope, I just intend to abstain.
Okay, so abstention. And any other comments from the public on this item? So it's been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Six voting aye, one abstention, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now that takes us to twenty-seven, which is resolution receiving and filing and rejecting all bids received for the recreational river area and riverbank improvements project. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, open it again for council discussion. Councilman Miller?
Just hoping for an update from staff on where we're at with this.
Okay, so Mr. Gaines, would you like to turn that over to Director Shragi?
So as you're all aware, October fifteenth was the bid opening. You can see that we received three bids from contractors. Unfortunately, we received information from the apparent low bid at the time. They had a large mathematical error in their form of proposal and asked to be withdrawn from the bid. That left us with two remaining bids, both in excess of around seventy-five percent above the engineer's estimate. So right now, we're going back to the design consultant to discuss where we've seen inflated costs from the contractors, we've spoke with contractors. So right now, we're in the process of redeveloping the plans to reflect some of the comments from contractors and where can we reduce some of the costs. So we believe at this time, in approximately a month, we could bring back forward a revised plan set in which could potentially go to bid late this calendar year or early January.
Okay, thank you, Director Shragi. Any other questions from council on this or comments or from the public? Okay, so this item has been motioned and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Brings us over to item forty, which is allowing bills and claims for November first, twenty-twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, then this requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. I now open for council referrals. Councilman Cruz, did you wish to bring one forward?
Yes, if we could discuss, as I mentioned earlier, the particulars on building and maintaining a parking ramp as it relates to fully city-financed, public-financed, or some shared financing with developers who may need parking on-site to buy in spots and whatever other techniques are available that other parking ramps have been built under.
Okay, so as a motion, just to make sure it's.
A little condensed.
Yeah, we want to make sure we don't miss anything.
That's what I tried to clarify, but.
Could it be a motion to discuss building and maintaining a parking ramp, especially as it relates to financing?
Financing and any other creative techniques.
Okay.
Good word to say.
Financing with creative techniques, how about that? So that's the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Point of order. Isn't this exactly what we referred last time and then we decided that we were going to talk about how to start the talk at goal setting and then have a committee after goal setting?
Yes, but that's, I mean, it is a valid motion.
We were going to.
I don't want to have the discussion about the motion until we've had a second.
I guess the reason why I called point of order was, is it a redundant referral or don't we, do we already have this referral? Or what's different from what we did? That's all, I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
So for Mr. Rogers, would this be a valid point of order? Or could we discuss it and say that it was already referred elsewhere?
It's an order, but it sounds like the proposal for consideration is to maybe move up the timeframe from goal setting to a earlier committee meeting, that's what I'm hearing.
Is that.
Right, that's what we just said ten, fifteen minutes ago, that we could dissect the details, public view it, transparency at a committee meeting or a special meeting, and I'd rather do it at a committee meeting, but.
Okay.
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, so the floor is open to discuss how to do this.
If I may, my whole point on doing it at goal setting is because you could have a potentially new council, so we can have the conversation at a committee meeting and then need to revisit that after the first of the year with a new set of people. So it makes more sense to stay in goal setting, in my opinion, because that, hopefully, depending on runoffs or whatever, will be the new council.
And I'll note too, that with goal setting, knowing that there could be some additional people to bring in, that this session might look a little different than in the past, like more lengthy discussion to get the existing council members, like the corporate knowledge, and any new council members to share. So functionally, it would work well, I believe, to have that in goal setting. Like we get, do we get set a dedicated amount of time just for that?
Question. What's the scheduled time period for goal setting? Have we set the specific dates?
Yes, we have, Mr. Cruz. It's the, let me look real quick, just so I'm not talking about the wrong dates there. So it would be December seventh, December ninth, and potentially December fourteenth if needed.
And then also, if we need an additional night for other topics, we could, but I think we could get that addressed on the third meeting.
This would probably be a different referral if we would record those goal setting sessions for public viewing. That would be a separate referral, I suppose.
Yeah, because that would be something as a council directive separately, right?
Yeah, of sorts.
So motioned and seconded for having that change, is that, did I understand it right? Or to have it discussed as a committee of the whole topic rather than as a goal setting topic? So.
I would almost think there's enough content there that I wouldn't want to, we could spend our entire goal setting on this topic. So having a meeting ahead of time to kind of identify what are the talking points or what are the issues around satisfying everybody on this, the more we talk about it ahead of time, it might be easier to be specific at goal setting. It just seems like it's, there's a lot of loose, everybody's got their own perspective on what it's going to be or what it should be. And I think we need to be somewhat, as a council, somewhat united on where we want to be by the time we get to goal setting.
Mayor.
Question.
So that would, that would maybe make a work session to talk about what we want to see staff present at goal setting or what kind of things we're looking for, so we're all on the same page. But then you still raise the question of, you could have an entirely new council and so goal setting seems like a great starting place, and then we can direct staff from there and then have a committee meeting. Oh, that's the way I think about it, but.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Cruz had asked first.
If there is no clear winners on the election tomorrow, what's the schedule for runoff? That's one month or?
November thirtieth.
My understanding is November thirtieth.
So then on November, December first, we'll know who is seated for the new council, and could we then make, I make my motion, so the newly elected people have a special session before goal setting to speak to Mr. Dara's comments about whittling down the talking points?
Can't do that because they're not sworn in.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a provision for them to speak as a government.
But they're at goal setting.
They're, well, they're attending goal setting as.
They do more than observe, you speak. I spoke at my first one before I was sworn in.
Right.
So you're there in a decision-making capacity. Right, Mr. Rogers? Is that fair? Because the previous council person that I beat was not there to discuss anything, so I'm, what's it called? What's the term?
Councilperson-elect.
Member-elect.
Member-elect, that's the word, is what the people, newly elected people would be.
So you're an interested observer, if you're the councilperson-elect, the person that didn't show up, that was an individual choice, it certainly had the right to be there. And remember, goal setting is a discussion whereby consensus is reached, there's no formal votes taken, and so there's not a recorded vote for people that aren't on the council yet, it's just to get a direction for staff to pursue the following year and then further. So I think that's the difference. There's no provision for a committee meeting or work session for people that haven't been sworn to office yet.
So council-elect couldn't have a work session?
No.
It's prohibited or it just isn't stated so?
No, they can't act as council people because they haven't been sworn and their term hasn't started yet officially until they're sworn after the first of the year.
Councilman Miller?
Goal setting is to build consensus, like Mr. Rogers just said. I don't, we're not going to decide, or you're not going to decide, the parking issue in its complete entirety at goal setting. Point being, if there's council consensus to move it along and move the direction of a parking ramp, then staff has that direction at goal setting from the newly elected people to move it forward. Whether we have a parking or meeting before that or not, we're going to hear similar issues to what were brought up tonight. We're going to hear similar issues that would have been brought up the last four years. So I think, I mean, to me, it makes sense to have the conversation, keep the information fairly simplified at goal setting. Staff, I believe we directed them to come with some numbers and potential locations or if this is even feasible, and if so, then those conversations start after that. And that's where you, we're going to have to dig into the meat of parking again in order to get through this, and I'm almost positive that's not going to happen in one four-hour sitting.
Okay, so what, for the motion that's on the floor, what we have is to, essentially to discuss this in a committee of the whole prior to the work session.
Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw that referral.
Okay, okay.
And then I'd like to make another one, if I may.
Yes, please.
As I mentioned a little bit ago, I'd like to explore the idea of having goal setting sessions recorded.
Second that.
Okay, it's motion and seconded, open for discussion.
Can you advise what difficulties that would be for our cable people?
I would, I would note as part of this that this, earlier this, I guess, ended last week, I was at a College of Education meeting over at U N I, and they had something called an owl, which is just a glorified webcam that looks somewhat like an owl, and it's got a three-sixty lens on the top. You plug it into Zoom and it will automatically pick up, based on people's directional voices, where to put the camera. It's a very nice system, I would be willing to ask if we could borrow it temporarily to see how that works and see if we could purchase one for the city later. So it would be very possible to have a work session that's at, sort of like our traditional setting over in the community, the Community Services Building or in the Public Safety Building, and still have that good dialogue around together, but have that recorded. So I think the technology's there to allow us to do it. So it's more a question of, does the council wish to have those sessions recorded and broadcast potentially? Did you include broadcast or just recorded?
Well, it'd be recorded and then posted on the website. I guess we could broadcast it on channel fifteen or some combination thereof, pending capabilities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so as a person who sat in on goal setting last year as a fairly new elected person, when I first came in, I would have said, yes, we should have it broadcasted. But after sitting in that room for, what, ten hours or so? Okay, first of all, it's open to the public, it's not like anything shady is going on there. Anybody that wants to invest the time to come and participate is welcome to come in and observe. The conversations, I feel like, would be different if it was recording. I don't know why that is, but I feel like conversations change when there's a camera on. It doesn't mean anything bad is going on or anything like that, but it doesn't allow for that honest conversation that I believe is so important in that goal setting session. So I would not be for recording or broadcasting that.
I would say too, these past two years, we've hardly had any time where there's been either, either committee of the whole or discussions and work session where we haven't been here at the dais. And I would attest to, the conversation changes the tone of it. I think people are less likely to ask innocent questions, like, I just don't know this thing because it's televised and they don't want to look bad. So I also would have great concerns about the tone and the quality of the in-depth conversations that we could have if it's fully recorded and people can bring back and say, oh, you said this at this time. Well, I was, I was thinking my way through these problems. And I'm like that too, I think out loud typically, and it's going to, it's going to squelch, I believe, in the conversation by having them recorded.
Yes, and I also believe some folks sometimes use it as maybe a stage. Either way, it changes the conversation. It's not that anything is going on that's bad or corrupt, it just changes the conversation and the way the conversation happens, and I feel like that is one time that is, you know, a good time to be able to let that conversation flow a little bit differently. And I would have said, if you asked me a year ago before I had participated, I would have had a different answer, but after participating in it, it changed my mind.
Okay, other thoughts or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Sires.
I would like to see it televised and recorded. I think that anytime we can show the citizens what we're doing, I think that's a better way to go. So I'd definitely be in favor for televising and recording. That's all.
Okay. And this is entirely a council decision, just your preference. So, Councilman Cruz?
Okay. I think when topics are brought forward in goal setting, it's the time of discovery and innocent questions are expected, naive questions maybe, if you want to call it that. So I think there should be nothing to be afraid of to record it and show it and have everybody dissect it because then it shows your council rep is being analytical and inquisitive and willing to learn and study and see all the facts, so then the public will then not be able to necessarily say, oh, it's a backroom deal, or, you know, it isn't because the opportunity is there, but, you know, at, when we start these at six, five, four hours, you know, not everybody can watch, not everybody can attend, and they got other things to do, they got their kids to take care of and put to bed and all sorts of other things. So to have it recorded, yeah, it'll probably change the conversation a little bit, but it's, everybody should understand that it's open, open conversing, so.
Okay, so that's, I guess that's, there was a question, was for the referral going forward, it's whether or not to record the work sessions and.
What are we referring now? Goal setting.
Yeah, for goal setting. And it's something that would take time to get set up, so it's not something we could decide very quickly. So I think it's a relevant discussion unless council objects.
What about a compromise and just do a recording like we do for executive session, see how that goes? And if we find that there's an interest in it, you could look. that there's an interest in it, you could look at possibly the next year doing it televised, if there's actually people requesting to hear the recordings.
So, I would, I would take that, then, I guess, as an amendment to the original motion, that instead of recording and broadcasting, it would be recorded using the same tech as our executive sessions. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, just a suggestion for compromise.
I like it. Second.
That's motion and seconded? We'll, I guess, use that as our amendment.
I mean, I wouldn't, I don't necessarily have, and I'm like 50/50, living on the fence. Doesn't really matter to me if it's recorded, I mean, I want people to be able to access it, but, it does, it does change, especially new members, you know? It will, it will change the conversation, for better or for worse. Also, I kind of like that I can wear my hoodie to those, and I don't have to wear a, you know, dress up nice. I know that seems crazy, but we're always in such a professional atmosphere, up here, with dividers, talking. Goal-setting is a little more informal, and we're humanistic about it, you know? So, but that being said, I wouldn't be opposed to trying Susan's idea of just recording it, and making, and if someone requests a copy of it to listen to, you know, maybe it's worth a try, and we could talk about it again. It's one of those things, it's a double-edged sword, it's kind of tough.
Okay. So any, any other discussion on this amendment, to have this item be, or the recording be done, just using executive session technology, and not broadcast to the public? They can request it if they want, they can request a copy. That's what's on the floor. So, all in favor of that amendment? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, let's see, a show of hands, so, all in favor, say aye. First, it'd be all in favor, hands, one, two, three, four. So that does pass, and so the technology, then, if we go with a recorded session, the technology would be what we use in executive session, and not broadcast live, and no video would be included in that. So, that's the motion on the floor now, is amended. Any other discussion? Okay, so, all in favor of this, recording the work session using executive session technology? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so a show of hands for that? Aye? One, two, three, four, five. Just seeing one, so...
Two.
Two, okay. So that, that does pass, and we will record using executive session technology, and that'll be available to the public during our work, our goal-setting session. So, with that, any other referrals to bring forward? Seeing none, then, any updates from council? Seeing none. Staff updates tonight. Mr. Gaines, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay, so, I did mention earlier about the, the fact that the Crew 3 launch was scrubbed for tomorrow night, so please don't show up at the public safety building, but we will plan to have a viewing, a city viewing, still on Saturday night, I believe it's 11:30 for launch time, so the plan is to still be there for that. And something's going on tomorrow, so I hope that you can get out and vote, and that's all I will say about that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Are we not doing executive session?
Oh, that's right, I apologize, let me follow the sheet here. So, moving forward, we have an executive session tonight, and that executive session is to discuss collective bargaining per Iowa Code 2017-3, as a negotiating session, strategy meeting of public employers, mediation, and the deliberative process of arbiters, and legal matters per Iowa Code Section 21-5, to discuss strategy with council in matters that are present in litigation, or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Is there a motion to move us to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Right, thank you very much. So we will move to executive session now, thank you for that catch. We will return briefly to adjourn, but everything from this point on will be in the council chambers, so you might not want to stick around to sit in an empty chamber. Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight, and again, go vote tomorrow, please.